I know, I know. I walk around, my foot is chilling me. I have a, I've been walking Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we're all the way. All right, get ready. Good evening, colleagues. It's about 6:36 and I'm gonna try to get this show on the road. That was easy. So, good evening, everyone. I will call tonight's meeting into order, the regular city council meeting for June 17th, 2025. If you can, can you please join me in the stand for our predigent allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina?
Here.
Councilmember David Oro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington?
Here. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Report on closed session confirmation and reportable actions, Mr. Ross?
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened an open session at 2:06 PM and after ascertaining there were no comments on the matters that endized for closed session consideration, adjourned to closed session at 2:06 PM, closed session concluded at 6:20. Um, I will do a written report upon, uh, return from closed session consistent with government code section 54957.1B with one exception and then there's an addition by the city manager. Uh, the one exception, uh, like to report is with respect to one of the matters handled under agenda item number one, anticipated litigation with respect to the Watson Ranch mediation and with respect to that, uh, there is, uh, reportable action in the form of unanimous council approval, five to zero to extend, uh, the Watson Ranch mediation, uh, agreement with mediator Michael Durkey, uh, for the Watson Ranch project, the cost to be shared, uh, 50% between the city and AC1 or Terry McGrath. Um, the extension of that contract will be to December 31st, 2025. The city's share will be at least, uh, $12,500 a month and, uh, whether or not it's more is dependent upon, um, AC1 and what they choose to share. Uh, that would be payable out of the unrestricted general fund of the city. Uh, with that exception, uh, and the addition then by the city manager and the, um, addition of a written report on the other matters, that would conclude my report on the closed session.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions from council? No. Um, as it relates to closed session, item number three, I also want to report that the council discussed the appointment of a law firm to perform city attorney services, but no actions was taken until a fee agreement is approved at an open meeting, um, of the city council in a near future. And again, any questions from council? Seeing none. Uh, moving on to our proclamations and presentations. Um, tonight, we have no proclamations, no presentations. Public comment, at this time, I'd like to open up public comment for any items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Mayor Washington, I have two speaker cards. Uh, the first one is Yvonne Beginsky.
Good evening, Yvonne.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Beginsky. I'm a resident of Napa County. I wrote up a little rant for all of you this evening. Um, I wanna talk a little bit about adversarial relationships and how they don't work. And there's always a winner and a loser and narratives don't always say the right things and they include distortions and exaggerations and misrepresentations. In the past three years, I've been before all of you and other commissions on issues of wildlife habitat conservation, idling engines, drive-throughs, landscape, neglect land use, and many others. I am not a resident of American Canyon and yet I am still here. There is no personal gain for me in these cards. I'm not a developer, I'm not an investor, and I have no agenda to run for any of your jobs. In fact, every issue that I've advocated for is something that would be good for all of us, no exceptions, the health of our planet, our people, and the future of our children. I have called out for the protection of open space, clean air, bountiful and diverse wildlife, and most importantly, the conservation of habitats so that nature, that's the nature that sustains us will be able to thrive. And yet, little changes. I don't blame any one of you. I see how busy you are with all the details of public office and how much you have to do to get through each day. I realize that you rely heavily on staff and the very developers for the information you might need to get your job done. Staff, too, follow work plans, agendas, and get swallowed up by the paperwork details of their job. They've already got their work figured out for the year and adding a new great idea isn't going to be in the cards. But there is one adversarial relationship that now needs attention, very special attention, and that's the Green Island Vineyard Development Project. I sat through that LAFCO meeting where decisions were made based on narratives that included those distortions, exaggerations, and misrepresentations. In the middle of all this, there's a truth. I am asking the city council to meet with the environmental groups and the developers together and let's talk about what realistically can be accomplished to save this property and restore it for wildlife habitat. Let's agree to what would work best for the greatest majority of life and what can be saved. As with all of you, I'm very tired of adversarial positions. The investor brought a group of men to the LAFCO hearing to promote his cause. Several of them turned around and told the audience to stay out of American Canyon. They told us it's not our business. Now, think about that. Imagine if those people living around our state in national parks said the same thing. The beauty of nature doesn't belong to anyone, it just is, and we need to revere, not destroy. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Kara Verner?
Good evening, Kara.
Good evening, Mayor Washington and council members. I'm Kara Verner with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition, and I wanted to just give you a brief update about Bike Month here in American Canyon and some bike-related activities. Um, we had a really great Bike Month. This year, every public school in American Canyon participated in Bike to Work and School Day, so that was really fantastic. We had a joint community station at Napa Junction and, um, former Planning Commissioner Tammy Wong and former Bike Champion of the Year, Tammy Wong, helped staff that station, um, in conjunction with, uh, school personnel as well. Um, I believe American Canyon PD even provided some crossing guard support at some of the more major intersections. Um, so we wanna say thanks to all those folks and we also wanna let you know that Bike Fest happened this year and we had Julia Salvador, who was doing, um, some stretching for bicyclist exercises, and the Solano Transit Authority led a bike ride through American Canyon up to Bike Fest. I just wanted to mention that because we always invite you to organize your own events around Bike Fest. If you wanna do a ride from American Canyon, um, next year, we would welcome it. Uh, we also had, um, OSAT's commissioners like, uh, Commissioner Mattson and Christensen, who came and said hello and supported Julia at Bike Fest. Um, couple other things. Oh, we wanted to mention that we, we believe perhaps there wasn't a Bike Month proclamation this year. Um, it was on the, it was on the agenda and it came off, I think, um, but we would, we would love to have that back. I know things get very busy in May and you probably do, proclamations ad nauseam, but we would, we would welcome that if you would, if you would like to have that back. Um, and then, um, we also, unrelated to Bike Month, it's just a timing thing, are really, um, on the brink of submitting, um, our Bike Friendly Communities application for the first time. And I wanna thank, um, Director Amon Smithies, Director Akita, Director Cooper, and Chief Greenberg for all the work and information that they gathered to put together that very long, um, very long application. So, we're on the brink there. And then finally, just one piece of cautious, cautiously optimistic, um, preliminary, um, good news is that we did receive preliminary approval from the Office of Traffic Safety to continue our bike safety education in the schools next year. Um, and of course, that is only available to us because, um, Chief Greenberg supports that with the data that he provides in his letter of support. So, we're grateful, um, for this partnership and, um, just wanted to let you know how we've been celebrating Bike Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
Uh, Mayor Washington, I have no other speaker cards.
Okay, and no one online?
No one, no hands raised.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to close public comment and move on to agenda changes. Uh, agenda changes, we have 15 items on consent item.
If there's no other agenda changes, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Got a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Okay, next is public hearing. Uh, there actually are no public hearing items for this evening, and I'll move on to business items. We have one business item, item number 20, fiscal year 2025, 2026 salary schedule. Uh, Mr. Holly, is this where I read the, this one statement or do I have?
Yes, correct, Mayor. Every year, we adopt, uh, and anticipation of the upcoming budget, a new salary schedule that determines the payer rates and wages for city employees and, uh, CalPERS requires that this actually be taken by council as a business item, which is why we're hearing it now. And so, there is a statement that we'd like you to read just to keep all of our I's dotted and T's crossed with CalPERS.
Okay, I'll do that right now. Persuading to California Government Code Section 54953C3, a recommendation has been made to adopt the salary schedule as presented in the resolution that, uh, enumerates the salary schedule which includes local agency executives, period. Um, with that, do I still open it up to public comment to make public comments on this?
It's your choice, but it's our past practice, so I'd recommend it.
Okay, well, I'll open it up for public comment on this item. I don't think I'm gonna have any, but I'll still open it up. Do we have anybody online?
I have nothing submitted. No hands raised online.
Okay, and it appears that, uh, there's no one inside here that wants to make a comment on it as well, so I'll close public comment. And I'll come to the board or to the, um, council for any statements, questions, or a motion to adopt this resolution.
If there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026 salary schedules.
I'll second.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Um, now, moving on to our management and staff oral reports, Mr. Holly?
We have none, thank you.
I have none. You're making this night go quick. Okay, thank you, Mr. Holly. Uh, let's move to our council and mayor comments and committee reports. Vice Mayor Joseph?
I was looking back over my calendar. I was on vacation and had some other issues, so I haven't been as involved, but did zoom in on the NVPA's Vision Zero Workshop where the primary issue was just some discussion about communications and the general theme that, um, let's not call accidents accidents, let's call them collisions or crashes. And so that was the, the message for that meeting. Um, that's all I've got to say today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Oro?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamatina?
Nothing to report, although I did go to the, the Phil-Am event and that was a lot of fun and good food, so, good turnout.
Okay, Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, last week, attended the Meet Me in the Streets, which was a good success. Thank you to the commerce, very good. Uh, also attended the AC Employee Kickoff Party, um, at Community Park Two. Also attended the Fiesta Barangai with, uh, with Melissa. And Juneteenth was also a great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Um, I submitted my report on the, um, for our agenda and I, I don't have anything else to, um, add to it. Uh, I'd like to open it up for any future agenda items, council? Any future agenda items? Seeing none. I'll close that and I will adjourn our regular city council meeting pretty quick, but you can't go yet because we have other meetings. We have a couple of joint special meetings to do. So, I'm adjourned the regular city council meeting for tonight and I will, uh, open up for our special joint meeting with the city council and the open space activity.
I have to close down at the minute and open the new one.
Oh, I'm going too fast for you?
It'll be a couple minutes.
Okay, 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 I'll do a timeout. Timeout. Well, I do, basketball. You all ready? Okay, I will call to order our special city council meeting and open space active transportation and sustainability commission meeting, and I will ask you all once again to rise with me as we say the predigent allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Debbie Chavaria is absent today. Commissioner Barry Christian, absent as well. Commissioner Sean Hughes. Vice Chair Tara McClinton-Hornor?
Here.
And Chair Nance Mattson?
Here. Does this working?
It, it's got a little on button. These?
We pushed the on button.
It was working.
Maybe a little closer? Tap it there. Do you? Yep.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Brando Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina?
Here.
Councilmember David Oro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington?
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, at this time, I'll open up public comment for this special joint meeting, uh, for items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Okay. I have one public comment for a non-agenda item, Yvonne Beginsky.
Thank you. I'm Yvonne Beginsky. I'm a resident of Napa County. I did take a look at the work plan, um, and I have a few observations that I have to make. The, um, the Clark Ranch Fuel Reduction and Replanting Plan is noted, but there is no reference to what it actually says. And there's a little synopsis on each of the items except on the Clark Ranch. So, I'm asking whether a plan has been developed and if it has been developed, um, is there a copy where the public can see it? I'd also like to have a better understanding of what provider input means. I have been attending several of the OSAT's commission meetings and it's difficult for me as an observer to understand exactly what its role is and what it can accomplish. Both the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission have staff that report to the commissions and make recommendations, but as far as I can tell, this commission doesn't have any staff and, and doesn't have anybody that they receive recommendations from. Um, the city manager seems to manage this and I can tell you that I think the city manager has an awful lot on his plate and isn't able to do a lot of the work that some, that needs to be done. If this commission is gonna make an impact on open space and sustainability, I'm wondering whether there could be an environmental specialist either as a consultant or a hired staff member who would be the commission's staff member, someone who would actually do the work of open space and sustainability. If American Canyon is serious about open space and sustainability, it could commit some supportive resources. I've heard loose recommendations from this council about starting a native plant initiative, a more urban tree planting, or even the question of how much open space is even available to the public in American Canyon. All this requires work and a worker, and that's what I see can make a difference in the effectiveness of this commission. I worked extensively on making recommendations to the newly adopted general plan. I sent them to the planning department and I attended three different council commission meetings to ask for specific conclusions. This commission would have been the one to have made a significant impact on biological resources and the sustainability. Perhaps if they were involved early in the process and had access to a wildlife biologist or botanist or other expert who could help them with the recommendations, it would make a difference. There's a lot I don't know about this city, how it's run, how things work, but I do know that commission membership takes a dedication and commitment and each person sitting here has an environmental point of view that could be of tremendous value to this community. I recommend that staff with appropriate credentials be hired to support this commission.
Thank you, Yvonne, for your comment.
I have no other cards and no hands raised online.
Okay, I'll close our public comment and move to our next item, which is the business item. We have two items. Uh, item number one is the 2025 Newell Open Space Management Plan. Uh, will that be, Mr. Akita?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am here this evening to provide, um, we're here this evening to discuss the Newell Management Plan. As you know, um, in night, in December of 1999, Jack and Bernice Newell donated the 640-acre property, as we all love, as Newell Open Space. This donation was intended to permanently preserve the land as open space for the benefit of the American Canyon community and it, and the broader region, while also protecting valuable agricultural and natural resources. The Land Trust of Napa County, it, uh, holds the deed of conservation easement over the property, known, over the property. The first Newell Open Space Management Plan was created and adopted by city council on November 15th, 2001. At that time, the property did not have public access and the plan was developed primarily as a visionary document intended to shape the property's future use for public recreation and open space preservation. In 2015, the City of American Canyon, along with the help of many community members, successfully obtained public access to Newell Open Space. However, the original plan was not updated to reflect that significant milestone to provide clear, actionable guidance for managing public use and maintaining the property in alignment with the long-term conservation goals. On December 20th, 2022, the council formed the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission and tasked this commission with updating the Newell Management Plan. Since 2023, that has been active work on our work plans fiscal year after fiscal year. As part of these efforts, the city needed to meet with the land trust and get a better understanding of what the land trust would expect of us for managing and operating this property since they held the, since they hold a conservation easement. So, we were, the city manager, as well as myself, did meet with the land trust to be able to build that relationship and get an understanding of what those expectations were. We brought that back to the commission and so in early 2020, 2023, the city also finalized a long-term grazing license agree, agreement with the Azovito family, who have been grazing on that upper portion of the property for the last 50 years. Cattle grazing serves as a natural form of vegetation management, promotes ecological diversity, and supports the conservation values of the property. So, we needed to make sure that we had an actual agreement with that family to be able to continue that initiative, cuz it would be an essential part of the plan. On September 6th, 2023, the OSAT's commission received, um, reviewed the 2001 plan and acknowledged at that time there was still a lot of great information in it. And what we meant by that is there was a lot of cultural and resource value that was still, uh, very relevant to the property today because there hadn't been any development on the property. And we know over time, property can change, but with the, we just realized that there was so much information in there that we could still reutilize and put into the updated plan. On October 4th, 2023, OSAT's commission, um, met and they memorialized the public access, the public access efforts that were achieved in 2015 to present day. This was essential because that was really never formally done with the land trust. So, the things that we were doing up there, yes, they were approved in the conservation easement, but we did not have that documented anywhere and we really wanted to make sure that we memorialize that. And we agreed that this is what the, um, passive recreational use that we could do up there, so that way we can include that in the plan. And as you can see throughout this entire process, we have included the land trust in this conversation cuz they were an essential partner to make sure that they felt included and they helped with this update. Additionally, on February 7th, 2024, OSAT's reviewed and provided feedback on the draft Newell Open Space Standard Operating and Maintenance Procedures. Together, the baseline document and the operating and maintenance procedure served as a foundational resource for developing the Newell Management Plan that is before you this evening. On July 15th, 2024, the city formally requested approval from the land trust to allow the use of Class 1 electrical bikes. And on August 1st, August 1st, 2024, the land trust permitted that use up in Newell Open Space. So, that was a huge, um, success. Uh, that was something that we really wanted to make sure that we had that updated in the plan as well. Additionally, on October 2nd, the OSAT's commission reviewed and provided comments on the jewel, the Newell Open Space Trail Standards. Um, this formally defined the property's trail system as a Class 2 multi-use accommodating cyclists, equestrians, and pedestrians. The trail standards incorporated the updated bicycle rules to accommodate the newly approved use of e-bikes within the property. Due to the land trust recommendation, the city engaged WRA, which is an environmental consultant, and they helped us conduct a biological survey based off of mammals, amphibians, and birds. Additionally, we also had a separate contract with WRA to help us have them be our consultant to make sure that they reviewed the final plan and made sure that we were incorporating everything that they have seen in other agencies' plans. So, with their efforts, um, we were able to finalize the draft and the OSAT's reviewed the final draft on March 5th and May 7th of this year. And the land trust also reviewed and commented on it as well. And the land trust also reviewed and commented on it as well. The development of the 2025 New Open Space Management Plan reflects a comprehensive multi-year collaboration between the city staff, the commission, the land trust, environmental consultants and the broader community. The updated plan provides clear, actionable guidance for managing public access, preserving natural resources and maintaining agricultural operations while ensuring ongoing alignment with the conservation easement. It is intended to serve as a living document that will guide staff in the responsible management operation of the property and help educate the community on the type of property and the purpose of the property for long-term stewardship. So tonight, we are here asking the council to adopt this plan through the attached resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your update and presentation, Ms. Akita. Are there any clarifying questions from the council and/or from the commissioners on what Ms. Akita just presented?
Could you mention some of the comments that the land trust had?
Can you be a little bit more specific on just general comments?
Yeah, you said that the land trust has some comments about the plan. I was curious what they had to say.
Well, throughout the process, they were part of the the recommendations for the trail standards as well as how to manage and operate an open space property that was in alignment with the conservation easement. That was really their main goal is having the city as well as the community understand that the conservation easement was actually the guiding document, not the previous 2001 Newell Management Plan, which was more designed as a visionary document. And we found some inconsistencies between that and the concert the conservation easement. And so that was kind of their role was making sure that this Newell Management Plan aligned with the conservation easement and that we can continue to grow with that. Some other comments that we got from the land trust was, like I mentioned, we did a lot of work around electrical bikes that was previously not allowed up there. Mountain biking in general, biking in general was allowed and it is outlined in the conservation easement under 4.7. But as the world has evolved and as technology has evolved, they needed to evaluate that request and make sure that our maintenance standards to support that recreational activity would not that it would meet the needs of preserving that property and not cause further damage. And so they were able to determine that Class 1 electrical bikes is permitted and it does fall under the classic definition of a bicycle.
Any other clarifying questions? CNN, I will open it up for item number one to a public comment for questions that may be from the public. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I I do have a card for item one and it is Cara Vernor.
Hello again, Mayor Washington and council members. I'm Cara Vernor with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition. And I wanted to come today to ask that you approve the plan with the exception of one of the park rules, which is that bicyclists have to reduce their speed to five miles per hour when passing anyone, animal, person, et cetera. Five miles an hour is is not fast enough for a lot of bicyclists to balance, especially not on unpaved surfaces, going up, going down. So going that slow could actually cause someone to tip, cause someone to hit a pedestrian. It destabilizes them to go for many people to go that slow, especially on that kind of environment. The average jogging speed is four to six miles an hour. So the way this is written according to park rules, a bicyclist a bicyclist may get stuck behind a jogger and and be not allowed to pass them. And I think most people would probably do that anyway. And I'm guessing commissioners and other people felt like, well, people will just take it as a as a guideline and not a rule. But there are rule followers out there and I do feel that this puts them at risk and could have other negative consequences too, such as turning the sort of awareness and the share of the park to are people following the rules as opposed to like, are we all just respecting each other's spaces and getting by each other? Which is the bigger issue. And I and I do think that's the issue that this rule was designed to get at. I just don't think it gets at it at a reasonable, common sense or even sort of a safe way. There's another rule in there that's great, which is that bicyclist must yield to pedestrians absolutely 100%. We're used to seeing that. We see that in open space parks. We see that in Skyline Park. That's what park users are used to seeing. And those parks are not having collisions. They're not having collisions between user groups. And they're very experienced in managing different user groups. This rule came from Marin County where user groups are sort of famously engaged in bitter battles. And that's thankfully not what we experience here in Napa County. So I know that this plan incorporates a lot of things. There's a lot of very hard work and as Director Akita outlined, a long time went into this. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't raise the concerns around that specific rule and how it could have negative consequences. And also carry on, I mean, when when people, like I know on the work plan, there's item to do etiquette usage signage and stuff like that. And one of the biggest things that happens is people say, oh, we need to be consistent. So so that will spread, like it's trying to spread from Marin to here. If we adopt this, it could spread as well. I think that's my cutoff point, right? Okay. I will end it there. Thank you so much for listening and for your consideration.
Thanks, Cara.
I have no, I have no hands raised online and no other speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Well, I'll close with a public comment. I'll return to council and to the commission. But I do have one quick question, I guess, for you, Ms. Akita. Cara mentioned that she got this information from Marin County. I mean, how does Marin County get to put something on our advisory for the five the five mile per hour thing with the bicycles?
We actually did not get this information from Marin County. This was negotiated with the land trust. So part of the process of allowing e-bikes up there was a requirement to update all of our rules that would apply to all bicyclists. And so part of the letter, we needed to include the background and history of the property. We had to include our intent, our interpretation of what a bicycle is, the actual definition of a bicycle. We also had to implement how we would manage and operate a property that would allow this type of recreational activity and include rules that were applicable to that type of recreation activity. And of those rules, we did put in there that because it is a multi-use open space property and you have a variation, a variation of different types of users out there between hikers, bikers, equestrian users and joggers, we felt it was appropriate to have a lower speed when you're passing because a lot of the feedback that we were getting from the participants up there was that bikers in general, it's not just open, it's not just Newell, it's down at Wetlands. If you haven't seen my YouTube video of trail etiquette, that that is an issue here. And bikers do tend to pass pedestrians and equestrians and individuals with dogs and straddle them. And there isn't a lot of etiquette with that. As you know, Newell Open Space, just like our Wetlands, is we don't have law enforcement that enforce our open spaces or parks. It's meant to be documented as that is the speed that we're comfortable with. And if we do decide to change it in here, we will have to go back to the land trust and ask for their approval. And this did come up at our last OSAT's meeting and the recommendation that I did provide to our commission was this is a living document. It is not meant to sit on the shelves. It is not meant to collect us. It is meant to be a guiding document on how staff is going to manage and operate an open space property that has conservation efforts as well as public access. And we absolutely can change this document anytime. That would be my recommendation is to change it every so often and every couple of years, depending on the nature of how we grow as a city or how recreation may change. But that would be a process with the land trust. And with us submitting that letter with getting that approval with that specific language, if we wanted to go back to land trust and and change it, we would have to submit a formal letter. And I'm absolutely positive that Lena would work with us and look at it. But for us, we didn't address it that evening because we had done so much work. And the letter that was approved by the land trust, it would have taken a minimum of 30 days for them to review a new letter with updated speeds. And we had been working on this project for so long and we felt that this was good enough for right now. And if we needed to make an update, we absolutely can do that in the future.
Man, that was a good response. Thank you, thank you. City Councilmember Oro.
Yeah. So it's 30 days until our next meeting. Why can't we accommodate that now and make that change and get it right the first time? Because we know how long it takes to actually get this done because we had something in 2001, we had something in 2015. You actually guys have done great, great work. I was reading through the document last night and earlier today. First of all, it looks cleaner. It's a lot easier to read. It's it's hard to believe that the copies that I've seen on the Newell Management Plan are like photocopies of carbon copied paper that rolled in those machines. It felt that old. So, you know, I'm I'm a, I'm in favor of sending that letter now. Listen, I actually think the whole thing should be striked. 15 miles an hour is the speed limit. And then there's already a rule in there for yielding to pedestrians, horses, pedestrians and and horses and other bicycles, right? Like it's 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 a it's a trail etiquette thing. You know, the behavior of American Canyon's citizens or visitors to this area on our current trails, yeah, that's bad, right? But it happens on the streets too. And we don't need to be implementing laws that we or regulations that actually don't have common sense. I believe the whole five mile an hour and the jogging thing, it's pretty slow. It really is slow and it is particularly on those roads because I mountain bike that area. Not as much as Sean wants me to, but like I mountain bike it on a regular basis. I actually don't see this anyplace else. I didn't even see it in Marin. I was in Marin a couple of weeks ago. What I do see is the yielding part of this whole thing. And I think we have to give the citizens the benefit of the doubt to use common sense and courtesy. And I like to lean that way. Of course, there are idiots out there. But, you know, even trying to enforce this will be hard. But I think you just take that the reduced speed to five miles an hour in passing or in a blind turns and just leave the speed limit to 15 miles per hour. My recommendation would be to just turn that in. We can put this on consent for next time if they made that change and get it right the first time rather than waiting another 10 years to make a small change. This is the opportunity to do it now. You have both commissions here. You have the the council here. And if it if it's a form letter, it's just a little bit more work. It's been a 10-year process already. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes. Well, first of all, it is a good report and a study and I do appreciate it. I should point out back in 2001, that was as good as it gets, having been part of the initial management plan. I don't know if we have any originals. I don't, yeah. So the pictures are as good as you get. I agree though on the bicycle thing that I know I can walk three to four miles an hour and that's almost five. And I'm pretty sure I'm not that fast or whatever. So I think five miles an hour in passing just doesn't make sense. Plus, there's no mechanism to enforce. So I'd be partial to using some language that focuses on use caution or common sense or good etiquette. So I would agree it'd be nice to to amend rule number six on speeds. I am concerned that we've got to get the land trust's approval. And and so I just want to be clear, are they advocating speed limits or are they simply advocating that you clarify what the relationship is?
They're not advocating speed limits. They're just advocating that we have rules around bicyclists.
Fair enough. Then then that would be my suggestion to go along with David, Councilmember Oro, as far as modifying that language to say the speed limit is 15 miles an hour and use caution when passing or something to that effect. The other item, and I don't know if if Commissioner McClinton Horner will bring it up or not, but she had suggested more pictures that, you know, there's, there's a lot that can be added. You know, parts of the the various sections of the preserve, you could have photographs of those so the people can relate. Some of the flora and fauna, if you've got pictures of those. So good text, but a little bit of, little bit of pictures would would enhance it. Thanks.
I would also add to Vice Mayor and Councilmember Oro's question, but I'd like to turn it over to the commissioners because, I mean, for it to get to us, it had have been vetted through you. And I'm just curious if if you felt that the five miles per hour was something that should have been in there? Or if it was, you know, something that you guys agreed upon, rather than saying a safe speed, rather than saying 15 miles per hour, how did you feel about pushing forward with the five with the five miles per hour passing pedestrians?
Go ahead.
I do remember, it is on, I do remember discussing it and I thought, I think we all thought the five miles an hour wasn't very practical. I remember Barry pointing it out. But if I can actually say this out loud, but I think the general consensus was maybe there's no real enforcement mechanism. So what can you really do? The trail etiquette is is the biggest thing. I think people are just, like David said, there's going to be good people and bad people. I personally think five miles per hour isn't very practical on a mic.
You say it is not or it is?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you. Can I add to it?
I agree. I actually, I wasn't at the last meeting. I had an emergency that day. But I do agree, I don't think that there should be a speed limit. I don't think we should write something in a policy or document that we're not willing to enforce. And if the police department also has stated that they don't have the resources to enforce that, I don't, I don't think it's wise to put that in there.
Okay.
So this issue was brought to us by Cara before our last meeting. We talked about it. And the OSAT's commissioners were not part of the discussion with the land trust regarding the five miles per hour. And when Cara brought it to us, we're like, huh, yeah. And actually Sandy and I tried to get, see how how slow we could go on our e-bikes out of the Wetlands. And we got to eight and we're still okay. I like the idea of not having that that five mile an hour speed limit. So if it's possible to circle back with the land trust, it sounds like the three of us all support looking into that. So.
And see, the reason I asked, the reason I even brought it back to you guys as well on this question, if it doesn't make sense to you, it shouldn't be on there. And by the time it gets to us, it should be at a point where we know that this part of the conversation shouldn't really even have to take place. So I kind of agree with Councilmember Oro, Vice Mayor Joseph. But again, the importance of us having these joint commission meetings, which I think, you know, we should have a little bit more of them throughout the years. It gives us that I that opportunity to have that dialogue with one another. Because sometimes I may see something that comes to us from the one of the advisory boards. And I think this is the assumption is that you think that's what we want to see. I think if it doesn't make sense, it shouldn't make sense and it shouldn't be put in any of our documents. So I appreciate the time that you guys have done to take this.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So when it came to us last month, it was Ellie explained that, you know, this is a working document, living document. And so we purposely put on our work plan that we wanted to evaluate the idea of speed limits and how to deal with that. So that's kind of our workaround and I I think this is a better workaround. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess so with that said, Ellie, what do we need to do to kind of, I know you said that it takes 30 days to get that whole process done?
Minimum, it's, I'll, I'll reach out to Lena. I'll have a conversation with her. And then normally formal requests have to, they can take up to 30 days for her to respond, depending on her schedule and everything. But I can at least start that conversation and work with her and see if she's flexible with the updated language. And if she is, we can, if she isn't, I can come back and report. If she is, then we can bring it back for consent with the update.
Yeah, I think that'd be an easy, easy solution and then it makes sense. You know, and that's, I guess that's where, yes, Nance.
So would you strike the two, five miles per hour in rule number six?
Yeah, I was actually going to go with Vice Mayor Joseph's recommendation where he said, keep the 15 miles per hour and then use caution when passing or on a blind turn.
Okay, thank you.
So will we put this on hold until you get back to us and then it'll be hopefully on our consent calendar?
Sounds great.
Sounds great to me, too.
Thank you.
And picture for for Mark. Moving on to our.
Ma'am, I'm not the only one who wants pictures, obviously.
No, I know. I've seen that's the theme. That's the theme with this council.
No, I know, I I've seen, that's the theme, that's the theme with this council. Uh, moving on to item number two, the, uh, work plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Who do we have to present? Mr. Holly?
Uh, yes, I'm going to rely on Director Akita a little bit as well. You know, annually, we get together, it was a joint session. The purpose is to outline a work plan for our our commissions um, for the upcoming fiscal year, and so, um, what you'll find in the packet, I'm trying to figure which page this is on. Page two hundred and eight of my packet, uh, is the proposed plan for the, uh, for the commission for next year. Commission has, um, has already looked at this, and this is kind of their their thoughts on the matter. Obviously, it's up to the council to decide what you want from from this body. But there were a couple of, uh, items that, you know, I think inadvertently slipped off this list. Do you want to highlight those, Ellie?
Yes, so the first one was working with MBTA on their update to their pedestrian and bicycle circulation plan. And then the other one was a recommendation that was made by the commission to, um, look at our, or get some information around sea level rise um, and get a better understanding of, um, what that is and where we're at as a city. Um, commi-, uh, Chair Mattson can actually, um, provide some background context on that, too, because that was her recommendation to add that to the work plan.
Chair Mattson?
We've talked about sea level rise a number of times, um, especially in regards to the the planning that was done out of the wetlands, and I know council members have talked about it off and on. I just wanted to know kind of, where are we? Have we, have we looked at it? If we haven't, do we need to, what what the timelines are? So it's just that a general, um, presentation from city staff about where we are on this issue. And if the, if the answer is, we haven't done anything yet, then the question is, what do we need to do? And what's our timeline that we need to deal with it? So it's kind of amorphous, I guess, is amorphous.
Vice Mayor Joseph, if you want to touch a little more about some of the commissions that you're sitting on?
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, last year I was on a working electeds task force on sea level rise um, through the, um, BCDC. And there is state legislation that talks about every jurisdiction that has access to the sea, which is us, um, needs to put together some kind of long-term plan. There's easy money available to do that planning effort, and then more competitive funding for the actual capital and, uh, construction. So there is a process going on. Uh, I haven't been as involved in it since they did their initial plan. But it is safe to say that there are resources out there, and we do need to do something. You know, that may dovetail into having some open space near our wetlands that could handle a little sea level rise every ten or twenty hundred years or something. So it's a good point. It does need to be looked into and and, uh, some kind of an action plan going from tearing off of the state legislation. Good point.
Vice Mayor Joseph is referring to SB two seventy-two, um, which is something that's meant to be done through with, in conjunction with BCDC um, for, um, for our city and for others that kind of ring the bell, so um, just to be clear, we're not, city staff is actually out there studying this issue. What we'd be doing is taking the work that BCDC has done and others and uh, and and seeing what those maps are showing for for our area.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council?
I can just give the council kind of a update on the items that are here. The other i- other items, the Parks and Community Services Master Plan uh, is underway, that the scoping of that has been completed, there's a consultant that's been hired. Uh, and although the Parks and Community Services Commission will be kind of the principal body that that work goes through, uh, this body will also be in kind of a review and comment process on that, so it's sort of underway. Likewise underway is the bicycle-friendly community designation, and actually, uh, Bike Coalition is is helping us do that. We've engaged them to do that, so we appreciate uh, their hard work. Um, uh, issue around, uh, courtesy trail signage and bicycle lanes and speed limits, kind of dovetailing with the the topic we just talked about. Mapping sustainability initiatives from the general plan, that's something new. Uh, we adopted the general plan, um, those two meetings ago, or the last meeting, uh, but the the concept there is to really understand how, uh, the sustainability initiatives that are in there and and how they play out as we look at our general plan development. You know, I don't know, you know, necess-, I know Vice Mayor Joseph has an interest in, uh, in consolidating those initiatives into a standalone chapter. I think mapping it out first is probably the first step. Creating a standalone chapter is certainly a possibility. I'm not sure the work involved with that, but at least mapping out where they are first, it becomes that first step. Uh, and then kind of the ongoing work, um, yeah, as capital projects move forward with complete streets elements, uh, this body, um, uh, does review and comment on those projects, um, as well as kind of an annual review. When we bring the CIP for the Capital Improvement Program forward, they take a look at the projects more generally, kind of as a lump, um, kind of as a group, I should say. And that's kind of what's on this list, so, um, you know, we think it's a, it's a reasonable list. Uh, you know, question about staffing kind of came up previously. This is a body that kind of has definitely some intertwined issues, but there's definitely three, I'll call them sort of distinct areas of purview, maybe, if you want to think of it that way, and generally how we've, um, set this up is the open spaces issues are the kinds of things that Director Akita is handling, the active transportation things generally pertain to public works engineering, so that's something Director Smithy's is, Public Works Director Smithy's is handling, and my, yeah, myself, I tend to handle the more sustainability issues, particularly because uh, and I forgot to mention number four on here, the Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, that's probably probably the biggest thing related to sustainability that this body will be looking at. Um, there's currently a countywide climate action committee. Uh, that body is looking at a draft plan now and trying to, uh, figure out what sort of process to go through for CEQA, um, to review that plan, so um, that'll be a very hot topic, you know, for the next ninety to hundred and twenty days, uh, and this body will be involved in in some of that, as well as the council.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Uh, Councilmember Oro. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I do just want to comment, because we're in public here, and I get a chance to talk about it. The update to the Parks and Community Service Master Plan, um, as I think about that, obviously, there's a lot of detail in there, and we we have a lot of work to be done, and I'll say this in the next meeting as well. A lot of you are here, uh, for that, the the Parks Commission. We lost control of a community center. We have, we still have it, and that's the middle school. It really belongs to uh, the Napa Valley Unified School District right now. We just rented for them. There is a need for a new public recreation or civic center here in the city of American Canyon. One that probably has meeting spaces, a gym, an event venue of sorts. We we're lucky and fortunate enough to be able to take Napa Junction Elementary School and turn that into something, but it's small. We have land, I would consider, I would ask you to think about the land that's coming online in in, um, Watson Ranch. There's some acres there that we could do something, uh, for a community center. Um, there's also areas that are next to Canyon Oaks and Mil-, uh, uh, Elementary School, um, and there may be other opportunities. I would just ask that, you know, as you think through that plan and and think about how the city council wants to think about it, particularly how I want to think about it, there needs to be something in there around some sort of civic center or community center that we can use, um, in multiple ways. Um, you know, other cities have it. Uh, you've been to a few. If you haven't been to one, Sassoon has a pretty good s- spot. Go check out their community center, um, and others. So we really need that. It's a long-term goal. We'll figure out, uh, and I think on the next uh, meeting, there's talking about creative ways of financing some stuff, and I think we're at a stage for this city to think about how we're gonna, um, finance, uh, in the long term, parks and recreation. Okay? That's it. Thank you, Councilmember Oro. Um, at this time, I'd like to open it up to public, oh, did you have a question?
I'll do after.
Okay. Uh, open up the public comment for anybody with, uh, questions.
Mayor Washington, um, we received one written comment on, uh, this item from Chris Benz, and it should have been emailed to everyone's uh, email automatically. Um, and I do have a few speaker cards for oral comments.
Okay.
Okay, CJ Mintalar.
Good evening, CJ. I'm good.
Hello, everyone, uh, city council members, mayor. Uh, my name is Calix Mintalar. I'm a current graduate from American Canyon High School, and I'm attending University of California Davis as a freshman. And first, I wanted to say it was a privilege to serve as the youth commissioner on OSAT's this past year, and I'm here today to advocate for immediate climate action in the new OSAT's Commission work plan. As opposed to continually putting climate actions on hold, as we've seen in previous OSAT's work plans. I want to thank the city council for responding to our concerns last month at the general plan hearing. At first, policy ENV nine point two called for immediate and sustained climate action and ended there. You added to that the extremely important piece that was left out. So our climate policy now calls for immediate and sustained action to achieve its goal of net zero climate pollution by or before twenty thirty. And as a reminder, three years ago, we plastic, we passed a climate emergency resolution and made a pledge to reach net zero carbon emissions by twenty thirty. This scientific threshold is very soon, and this work plan still has these interim climate action plans on hold. Our people trust OSAT's, and further delay causes more discouragement. It is our responsibility to protect the future for younger generations, and as someone who is a part of this generation, I am asking that we get serious about climate action in the American Canyon and show results now and not later. I hope that you will take your commitment to the twenty thirty net zero goal seriously and set an example for evaluating all planning and development through the climate lens. Will OSAT's lead the charge? Our roadmap to our safe future and beyond lies in your hands. Please take immediate emergency-level actions. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ.
Next speaker.
Yes, thank you. Um, Catherine Bit.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, council members and commissioners. My name is Catherine Bit. I'm an incoming senior at American Canyon High School and the co-vice president of Napa Schools for Climate Action. As our city leadership and officials pro- progress in outlining the future of American Canyon, please remember how critical it is to pursue sustained and immediate climate action. Being under the current circumstances of our evolving climate emergency, we're in an especially vulnerable position where as we must stay true to our commitments of exploring and implementing ways to promptly approach this issue as soon as possible as a city and a broader community. The Napa Schools for Climate Action Team and I have previously communicated with both the American Canyon Planning Commission and the American Canyon City Council about our concerns as the youth of our city. I want to thank you for the recognition, action, and collaboration we've received. Both Mayor Pierre Washington and Vice Mayor Mark Joseph have expressed perpetual support. This can especially be recognized in the integration of one of our main requests to make the specification of the twenty thirty net zero deadline clear in our city's general plan. This level of commitment and support does not go unrecognized and is greatly appreciated by me, our Napa Schools for Climate Action Team, and all of the rising generation, as our city's leadership exceptionally recognizes youth voices and takes the threat of the climate emergency seriously. It is time for our OSAT's Commission work plan to stay true to our commitment of immediate and sustained action, especially when we're put under the pressure of our current climate crisis, the time we need it most. Napa Schools for Climate Action, a student-led advocacy group that promotes climate and environmental justice with particip- participation from capable and passionate students across Napa Valley Unified School District high schools, would be more than happy to provide assistance to the city council and OSAT's Commission to expedite climate emergency action, which means taking action now, not later. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Kate.
Jim Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, commissioners, staff. I appreciate your time. I'm Jim Wilson. I'm speaking today on behalf of Napa Climate Now. The OSAT's Commission can provide a valuable service to the city council and the community by taking on the review of climate actions in the draft Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and determining which actions will give the city the best bang for the buck. There's a new tool to help with this, Total Climate Accounting, which measures all climate forcers and calculates the amount of heat reduction occurring over time, pick a time, we don't have much time, but pick a year, due to a particular measure that we pick. The conventional climate accounting, using GWP one hundred values, that's global warming potential over a hundred years, either undervalues or emits short-lived climate super pollutants and other key climate drivers like the reflectivity of surfaces. This has skewed results and slowed vital progress. Napa Climate Now has given presentations on total climate accounting to several members of the Climate Action Committee, and would be happy to do so for the OSAT's Commission. We want to make sure our decision-makers have access to the latest climate science so that our region can get the biggest benefit from local climate actions. The Napa County Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Greenhouse Gas Reduction Measures and Adaptation Plan website lists eighteen quantified measures. These can be evaluated using the greenhouse gas emissions data from American Canyon in the inventory to see which actions are most relevant now. Total climate accounting will show which actions will give the biggest reduction, the biggest reduction in warming over time, short time. Napa Climate Now would be happy to provide you a presentation to inform your review of the Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The fastest way to take action on climate change is to decide fast which actions to take. Can we make this an OSAT's priority for this new fiscal year work plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I have no other speaker cards for this item and no one online.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to close, uh, public comment on item number two, return to council and to the commission for any additional statements, questions, or an adoption, and I'll start with Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, well, thank you. Um, and I appreciate the amendments to the work plan on the bike ped plan support, because I I was going to bring that up. Uh, I do think sea level rise is certainly something that OSAT's ought to at least, uh, get a presentation on and get get a little bit more informed about the law and where things stand. Uh, but of course, my biggest interest is probably in the climate action arena, and I certainly appreciate the comments we've heard tonight. I know the philosophy is, um, to get the Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan adopted, the environmental review and so forth. And I certainly appreciate that as a larger strategy, but in the interim, there is a tremendous amount of low-hanging fruit. Um, just to pick off a few, there's the Climate Action Challenge app that we can encourage people to enroll in. It's a great little mechanism that you go through, and you you literally can map out your energy use and figure out ways to reduce your your climate footprint or your carbon footprint. So encouraging people to sign that up for that, encouraging people to go to Deep Green with their PG&E or or their MCE accounts, um, retrofitting your homes to be more energy efficient, buying an EV. All of these things are more in terms of promoting and advocating. They don't require a lot of analysis or study. It's literally, go out and persuade your neighbors to to do something. And I think that needs to be, um, on the work plan for OSAT's to have them be our champions and and to take advantage of youth. Um, I met with some of the students, and, uh, my mind, because of my generational perspective, I guess, was, well, let's figure out if we can get some money to hire some part-time help. And the response was, frankly, we're willing to volunteer because we see it, you know, from a different perspective, that they're saving their their future, and frankly, it's, it looks good on their resume, which is also a time-honored approach. So I think if if we give OSAT those marching orders to take advantage of the low-lying fruit for now, and then when the R cap is approved, well, then you'll have a whole bunch of projects to take on. But I really think that needs to be an issue. I also think we need to figure out a way to supplement the staffing support. Uh, I appreciate the fact that the city manager is is providing some support, or or our Parks and Rec director is. But as Yvonne pointed out, they are busy people, and they really can't be expected to- expected to drill down and provide the kind of support that I think a part-time program coordinator or whatever title you want to give them is. And I know that we're trying to save some money on the environmental review of the R cap, and if we're successful in that pursuit, I would like the council to consider taking advantage of that savings and applying it towards a part-time position that can be dedicated to provide support to OSAT's. Because climate action is certainly important, but active transportation is critical, and open space. I mean, the commission has all kinds of really cool stuff, and the more support they can get, the more cool stuff we will get as a community. So those are my two pitches. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to give the OSAT Commission an opportunity for any closing remarks or any final questions or statements that you may have.
I agree with Vice Mayor Joseph about the low-hanging fruit. We did choose some low-hanging fruit a couple of years ago, and eager to...
Kara, could you talk a little louder or move the microphone a little closer?
We did choose some low-hanging fruit a couple of years ago, and I am eager to get moving on that. So I agree, I'd like to see that on our agenda also. We have the item, there's an item on here that kind of reflects that, the number four. Oh, that's the regional one that we just heard public comment about. But we do have some things identified that I think we could move forward with.
Thank you. Commissioner Mattson?
I have a number of comments, but let me stick to this one, because I did pull up our list of low-hanging fruit, increased deep green, encouraged residents to use the Napa Climate Action Plan Challenge Tool, increasing tree planting, and then the last one was prepare a roadmap to 2030 to engage American Canyon businesses and residents with social accessibility and support to achieve these goals. We were charged with coming up with low-hanging fruit, but it didn't go anywhere. And one thing I thought of when we came up with this list is, if you remember a couple droughts back, and I think we had some sort of funding to do full press on droughts issues, you know, the water collection cans, the, you know, tools, et cetera, et cetera. If we could do that around our low-hanging fruit and have staff support similar to being at meeting in the streets, community events, to hand out information and guide people through using the tools, I think we would get some traction. But without that person-to-person interaction, we're not going to get there. And I think our Chamber of Commerce is amazing, and I'd love to work with them to get into the business community, to see what the business community is doing and what they can do, rebates, programs, et cetera. So I'm right there with you, Vice Mayor. And I think this next year, it does tie to reviewing the Regional Climate Action Plan, but I don't know if we need to put more oomph onto that item. There is community engagement as part of that item. So I don't know what we want to do with that. So if you want to charge us with coming up with a plan for engaging the community to try and give us some money to do that, that would be great. But maybe we should just talk through it over time. And the question is, do we then add the low-hanging fruit to number four? So that's something to discuss. Should I go on to other items, or should we discuss this one first?
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay. Going back to number three, we actually had a different wording of the bicycle speed limits. We had Consider Bicycle Speed Limits and Usage Guidelines. So what I'd like to suggest on number three is we have established courtesy trail signage including considering bicycle speed limits. So it gives us more leeway on that. I want to talk about number five, mapping the general plan sustainability initiatives. It sounds like there's already some movement to try to collect all those action items and tasks and combine them together. When I first brought this up, I thought it would be good. It's not just sustainability, it's open space and active transportation that are in there as action items for the general plan. So I don't know, is somebody already combining all those, or is that just a wishful thinking at this point?
Not sure. I'm not sure I quite understand the question. I apologize.
Oh, I think you mentioned that there had been a request maybe from Vice Mayor Joseph to take all those lists of action items and just lump them together so they're in one section, is that right?
What I was referring to is some of the comments made during the approval of the general plan during that public hearing that the council made, specifically Vice Mayor Joseph. So no, we...
Oh, okay.
I was expressing what I knew his interests were, probably keeping him from saying those are my interests. But no, that's not an active activity right now. The point of me saying that was, this showed up as a topic on this in part because we'd heard comments from the council during our general plan hearing. So the work has not started yet, anticipating the council would be supportive of it, kind of explaining how that idea landed here. It came from us listening to the council and finding a bucket for that future idea that the council talked about.
Okay, so it's similar yet different.
I'm not sure.
So ours is more, so we have a checklist of, here's all the sustainability tasks and projects that the general plan says the city wants to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the general plan doesn't talk about projects.
There's a fair amount of it. But I can keep that for when Brent and I meet on Tuesday.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, but I still want to keep it in the work plan.
Yeah, no, it's in there.
And there's just one quick comment on the Complete Streets. I keep hoping to see how many miles of bike lanes we think we want, we know we have in our plan versus how many we've achieved. And I don't know how easy that is for Public Works to give us, but it might be nice to have that as part of the Complete Streets presentation. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Mattson.
Mr. Mayor, can I actually, our Public Works Director, Erica Almond Smithy, has just mentioned that we already have that, so I just wanted to let you know that. So we do have that. We can share that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, anything?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. So I guess the ask from the council is to adopt the ordinance regarding the addition of Chapter 2-30. I'll entertain a motion for that.
It's a minute order.
A minute order? Okay. So it's just a minute order?
It's, I'm sorry. It should be adopting a minute order approving the OSAT's work plan for fiscal year 2526.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion if it's seconded. And that would be to include promoting low-hanging fruit on climate action? Or words, or something a little more sophisticated than that, but with that as an intent?
All this fruit talk, I want an apple now, so.
Yeah.
So moved again.
Okay. Then I'll second it.
We have a second, Madam Clerk. Can we get a roll call, please?
Just ignored parliamentary rules, but it's close.
Okay. Hold on a second. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And with that, we'll adjourn from the OSAT meeting, and we will re-adjourn for our second special meeting after we get some time. Five minutes.
One to go. Oh, they're here. They're over here. Sorry, Juan picked them up. Test, test.
Take them out and...
Oh, thank you. It's hot in here. I'm dying.
You know, this is the first time I've seen that on. I thought you were telling me you wore my jacket on. I said, I just got the...
I was just acknowledging your kids.
Yeah, but I haven't seen no one really wearing them too much. I was like, oh, it was a miss.
I was waiting for my time.
Jason wore his, and Eric wore his, and so, but I haven't, I gotta get, okay. So I gotta get a couple more.
I never got one.
I wasn't sure how big it hit them, but I have not seen people wearing them, so I was like...
I never got one.
But I'm gonna get some more. And I thought I got this one, unless it's the wrong size.
I never got one. I know. Yes, no. I won one, and Nicole has one too.
I have one to plug, I have one you can plug in, but it is loud.
All right, everyone. Get this show on the road.
Cooler in the winter, hotter in the, you know what I mean?
I'd like to call to order the third, or the second special joint meeting with the City Council and the Parks and Community Services Commission for June 17, 2025. Please join me as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you conduct a roll call, please?
Commissioner Shirley Coote?
Present.
Commissioner Scott Meyer? Commissioner Ian Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Elston Mallory Jr.?
Present.
Chair Gina Griggs?
Here.
Councilmember Brando Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina?
Here.
Councilmember David Oro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington?
Here.
We'll move on to our business item. Item number one, facility naming.
We have public comment?
Oh, I didn't do public comment, yeah. Well, let's open up a public comment for any item that's not on the agenda tonight.
I have no speaker cards.
It was a setup. No, no problem, no problem. We'll move on to our business item. Item number one, facility naming. Ms. Akita?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're here this evening to review and discuss the recommendations for renaming the former Napa Junction Elementary School, Community Park One and Community Park Two. As you recall, the Parks and Community Services Commission was tasked with renaming these two parks and one facility as part of their work plan this past fiscal year. We did conduct a public naming process where we engaged the community to provide recommendations on what they would like to rename those two parks and one facility, and that opened on July 18. those two parks and one facility, and that opened on July 18th, 2024, and closed on August 30th, 2024. During that time, we received 62 applications in which 61 were, met the naming criteria. Um, we received 24 applications for Community Park One, 24 applications for Community Park Two, and 13 applications for the former Napa Junction Elementary School. The previous commission, where their term ended on December 31st, 2024, did review these recommendations, um, both on September 12th and October 10th, and provided a recommendation for the new commission coming in. And this new commission reviewed the applications and recommendations at the March 13th commission meeting. During that time, the commission, um, has recommended, both of them actually recommended for Community Park One, um, three options to what they liked out of all of the applications that were received. One being Rio Del Mar Park, John Micky Park, and then American Canyon Community Legacy Park. And then for Community Park Two is Donaldson Park, Independence Park, and then Patriot Park, Leon Park, and Mycologic Park. And then for the Napa Junction Elementary School, they came up with Mycologic Center, Junction Point Center, and Heritage Hall. This is just a reminder that, um, the Parks and Community Services serves as the Technical Advisory Committee, and they provide recommendation to the council, but the council does not, uh, they can absolutely go with something completely different. Um, but that is completely up to this body on the renaming process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, I would probably ask the commission to kinda, you know, explain your thoughts and processes to the council, so we kinda understand that before we start either asking questions. If you don't mind, I guess.
I'll go ahead. Can you hear me? It's just a little weird. Um, so we took, um, public comment, and then we debated, and, um, the consensus from comment, and then the debate, was that for parks, it made sense to have, um, it be location-specific. That's, that's the primary recommendation, so the name of the street, uh, particularly for, um, people who are visiting the town. So just, just for ease. Um, Mycologic Center, um, there was, um, through all three, um, of the, um, locations, there was, um, seemed like there was, um, strong support for naming it after, um, uh, Mickey or Dolly. Um, Mickey and, um, I think Mickey and Dolly was proposed for the center, but we felt that didn't quite have the, had kinda like a Dave and Buster's ring to it. So we would, so we, we proposed Mycologic, which had been proposed for the other parks as well. Um, so I think that was it, unless there's, that was the, that was the process, so.
Okay.
And then it's, um, Ally's suggestion, we gave you the al, the alternates as well, but...
Yeah, we've seen the list of, the list of names. Um, before I open up the public comment, anybody on the council have any clarifying questions or statements that they wanna bring up?
Can I add?
Who?
Gina. Okay, so I would just like to echo, uh, Commissioner Smith's, uh, thoughts and, um, vocalizations about the process that we went through, and add to it that the previous commission, this was quite a long process. Um, we had lots of community engagement. Um, we had opportunity for public comment. We reviewed each and every application, and we really had a long, sort of more working meeting where we went through every name and had lots of discussion, talked about, um, the sort of naming of the current parks in our community, and kind of sticking with that geographical location, because if you think about it, we have Via Bellagio Park, and we have Shenandoah Park, and we have the, um, what's the one? Melvin Park. Yeah, that one. Melvin Park, and then Linwood, so it's all, they're all, they're all location. We have a lot of parks, and they're all based on the geographical location. So that was our thinking behind the park, and then we really wanted to honor Mickey and Dolly Mycologic. And having the community center named after them would pay homage to their contribution to the establishment of the City of American Canyon and its incorporation. So those, those were our thoughts, and we're excited to hear yours.
Thank you. Counsel, any, any comment? Uh, Councilmember Oro?
Man, I hit it first?
Okay, you did.
Uh, listen, I, I, I agree that I told the council... I told the council ahead of time, I was like, oh, we gotta be scared, this is the scariest decision I've had to make in a long time. Naming parks around here. I mean, we all know they wanna be renamed Community One, Park Two, uh, One and Two. We gotta rename those, 'cause I'm confused all the time. Um, I do like the location names, and Gina, you just, uh, Chair Griggs, you, you described it perfectly. All our parks are known that, so everybody knows where Shenandoah is. Everybody knows where Silver Oak is. Um, and so I, we, we should stick to that. So Rio Del Mar Park is, it's tucked in a little street corner there on Rio Del Mar. That makes sense. I do have a hesitation with Donaldson Park, because Donaldson does one of those funky turns, and there's also a Donaldson Way e- east, only by Shenandoah Park. I could probably live with Donaldson Park, because there's a Donaldson School there, there's a Donaldson Park there. But if we did have to rename it, um, based, and I don't think I'm gonna have the votes on this, but if, if we didn't wanna cause that confusion, it is where we have our Fourth of July parade. I'm like, Independence Park would be cool, too. Interestingly enough, you know, if we're keeping though with the patriotic theme, we will be having, um, uh, I'm sorry, the, the Wall That Heals showing up there. Sure, so it could be a patriotic park, too. So I can go that way. I could go Donaldson, let you know. And then finally, I, I looked at all the names and submitted, uh, you know, the Mycologic Center for the Na, uh, Napa Junction School. I, I'll, I'll give it to Mickey and Dolly, however we name it, but I think it should be named after them. You know, it, it is to the uninitiated, and if you're not from around here, how do you say that name? Well, if you're from around here, you know how to say Mycologic, so you can just call it that center. And, um, of all the people in American Canyon that have had such a long history here, um, well, actually, there's three. There, there's Beth and Fran, and there's Mickey, that I've never heard a bad thing said about him. So, all the rest of us are guilty of being bad. So, uh, I, I would, I would welcome their name on, on that center. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Well, I have similar views, but different. Um, I, number one, I do think John Mycologic needs to be honored. Um, and it's okay to convert it to Mickey, because everybody called him Mickey anyway. So I'm, I'm a little more partial to naming one of the two community parks after Mr. Mycologic, just because I think it, it's more prestigious to be named after a park than a community center. Um, so, a, and I could go either way. Community Park One, the advantage of naming it after Mycologic is because it's one of the older parks, and he was part of the older, uh, process. Although geographically, naming it makes sense, too. A reservation, it may make sense to call it Rio Grande Park, because it's technically on Rio Grande. And I say that not because I'm a nerd, which is true, but I'm not in this case. There could be a park along Rio Del Mar as you get closer to 29. And so not wanting to, not wanting to create, uh, you know, Rio Dale Park One and Rio Del Mar Park Two, um, you might wanna look at Rio Grande. And then for me, that would turn Community Park Two into Mycologic Center, or the Mycologic Park, which will be very confusing, and people won't be able to pronounce it correctly and all that. So, uh, if I had my druthers, I would name, um, Community Park One after John Mycologic. I would name Community Park, whatever you wanna call it. Without the one or two, I could live with Community Park being Community Park, but that's, I'm not strong on that. The last one is the community center. I have to be honest, I'm kinda partial to calling it what I've been calling it for the last year and a half, which is the Napa Junction Community Center. Doesn't honor anybody, but it's just on the street, Napa Junction, old Napa Junction Elementary. Uh, and so I'm, I'm, would support that. Uh, I wouldn't go home crying if it didn't happen, but that would be my preference for Napa Junction Community Center. Com Park One could be John Mycologic Park. Community Park Two can be whatever the group wants. It's a wild card for me.
All right, Mr. Holly, I'm gonna give you a chance to talk in a second, but I wanna, I wanna kinda put my, my thing in there real quick before I lose my frame of thought, because I kinda agree with these guys with, uh, some of the things that they've mentioned. Um, I, I know historically, we've named our parks after the streets, but I think that was because we didn't really have people that, at those times, that we really wanted to honor. I think it's a real big tribute and an honor to those, those who have served and created the, the, uh, images of our city. And I would say Mycologic would be that Com One park, in my opinion. Uh, I'd say Com Two, because of all, all the things that we do every year for Fourth of July. Uh, it ends right there at that park, and Independence Park, Patriot Park, both of those names resonate with me, um, especially since we've been selected to have that wall, that hills that come. I think that would be a, uh, an added feather to the cap. But what I haven't heard tonight is for the Napa Junction. And someone that has been near and dear to, to my heart, and everything that I've done since I've been in the political world, has been Leon Garcia. And for me, renaming that, that center, the Leon Garcia Center, uh, would, one, show a, a man who have served 18 years of his time as the mayor of our city, as the elected mayor of our city, would be an honor, um, to be able to provide that to him. So often, we do things and name things of people once they're no longer here. It'd be nice to be able to name something after somebody who is actually still living, uh, so he knows that he is appreciated, because I think that, uh, he did, uh, lead our city. He was a great ambassador for our city, and when you think of Leon Garcia, heck, I'm still called Leon Garcia when I go to meetings. Um, he has, he has really, uh, embraced this community, um, and he has been a great mentor for me. So it would be very important to me, if not this center, something's gonna be called Leon Garcia. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Holly.
But I only just wanted to mention, we do have one park not named after a street. Veterans Park is located on Broadway, not named Broadway Park, it's Veterans Park, so.
Thank you, good point, good point.
I was, I was going through all the names of parks in my mind, and that's the only one that comes. I'll add just a little bit, that some of the naming convention around parks is kinda like street naming convention. Often, parks that are built by private developers, just like the streets that are built by private developers, are named by private developers. We don't typically get involved in the naming process, and many of the parks that you have in mind, Silver Oak, Gadwell, Shenandoah, for example, um, were all built by developers. And so it's not surprising necessarily that there wasn't a big naming process for those parks, 'cause we weren't involved in the streets' names, and they prob, they probably called them that, because that was the street that they just cut down building, so, just some more food for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with everything you're just saying, uh, about naming these parks and centers after people that have been pillars of, of our community. I know earlier on, we didn't have that. We're such a newer, newer city. Um, and it gave me an opportunity to read about, uh, John Mickey. He was before my time. But I totally, absolutely agree with, uh, Com Park, or Community Park One, as a John Mickey Park. Uh, Community Park Two, yes, are, um, of course, are parades. Um, everything that's centered around our city is pretty much there at Community Park Two. So I believe in that Independence, uh, sound. That sounds, that sounds great. I like that. Napa Junction, I have to agree with you again, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, as former Mayor Leon Garcia has been a mentor to me. And we have pillars here today with Beth Marcus, um, Fran Lemos. We have, uh, Lemos Apartments and Marcus Road and, and stuff like that. So I absolutely agree that, uh, I would love to have Leon Garcia Center renamed after Napa Junction Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Lametina?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a preference for, I kinda like the Mycologic Heritage Hall. Um, and definitely Independence for the park. I think that's very important. And the other, undecided still. Thank you.
Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I just wanna go back to, just, I, I'm leaning on the commission's work. We were leaning on some of their work all, all the time. I think the locations of the park. Um, the only change I would make is the Rio Grande Park is actually a little bit more accurate. It'll take a little bit of people some time there. Um, there is possibly a, a park closer to 29 that's there. Then, I'm still having, Independence Park sounds great to me. To Council, Vice Mayor Joseph's point about park and a center, I think actually a center is more, um, honoring than a park. Um, so there's the Kennedy Center. Those are those places that are like that, and I think we can make something out of it, and there's more activity there that's going to happen. In terms of the naming it for it, for the previous mayor, I don't know if I can get behind that, because I'm literally looking, if you're gonna go down that route. Fran Lemos has been in that seat since 1992. And, and like, she's been here longer than anybody, and she's from here, and she's lived in that house, and like, has given to this community more than anyone, I think. And so, you know, I think Mycologic would be the one for the community center, and then the place naming and location. And for Rio Grande, and then Independence, just so we're not confusing it with the two different sides of Donaldson.
Uh, Council, Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yeah, um, I can go along with, um, those recommendations, too. Rio Grande Park, um, Independence Park for Community Park Two, and then the John Mycologic Center. Uh, and we'll still call it the Mickey Center, but... So, uh, I would throw my lot in there. Part of it is, and I don't know why, but it's often been recommended that you shouldn't name anything after anybody if they're still alive, that it's more to memorialize their legacy than, than to recognize it while it's still going. Hardly a criterion, just something that, you know, was put into my head years back, and that's how I think. So, um, I could certainly go with Rio Grande, Independence, and John Mycologic Center.
And Mr. Manager, sorry, just to finish one thought there. The, uh, Councilmember Cruz mentioned, uh, Fran Lemos Point and, and Marcus Road. Those were named by the developer, not necessarily anybody in the city.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up to, uh, public comment.
Thank you for delivering on this. Nance Mattson, resident. Um, I just pulled up John's obituary. Twenty-two years on the, first started on the American Canyon School Board, and then when they became part of Napa Unified. So he's a school, school board member for 22 years, and then eight years as a supervisor. And then goes on about other things in the community. When Sandy moved here in 2000, she went to Mid-City, and she met John, and he said, get involved in the community. And, you know, we did. But, um, but I wa, also wanna suggest, if you're gonna name the center after the Mycologics, name after, that, both of them. It doesn't have to be John, and, and, you know, it can just be the Mycologic Center. That way, we can remember that the two of them together did a lot of things for this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nance.
Uh, Fran Lemos. Uh, I think, uh, something that you guys have all forgotten is the memorial trees. And they have plaques, and I think number two should be the Memorial Park, because they have trees that have, uh, things underneath the trees. And, and I don't know why, uh, they don't continue having the Memorial Park, trees. I know that that park is full, but I think they can find a spot around there somewhere and continue that, because a lot of people, a lot of old timers are buried, uh, have a plaque that they buy. So that's what I would suggest, and I like the fact that you're honoring Mickey, and, uh, Le, and Leon could be another place. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Hello, Tara McClinton-Horner, resident. I was just, uh, curious, Googled...
I was just curious, Googled on, online to see what is the thing with naming people while they're, naming parks while they're still alive. AI says, while not strictly a taboo, naming a park after a living person is generally discouraged and often avoided due to potential future issues or controversies. Many municipalities have policies that favor naming parks after deceased individuals, with some requiring a settling period after death. Just something to think about. And I just wanna say that, I mean, I love John. I think of more of a garden than a park when I think of him. And I think maybe if we had some kind of a native plant garden, I think, I feel that feels more appropriate to me. And I would like to vote for Patriot Park and Independence Park.
Thank you, Tara.
And I don't need that named after me, I already got something.
Still live, too.
Madam Clark, anyone else?
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised online.
Okay. At this time, I'll close public comments and return to the council and to the commissioners for additional comments. I'll start with the commissioners, if you have any. If you just raise your hand, I'll, Commissioner Smith?
Sure, so I'll just echo Council Oro's point.
Can you put the mic closer, please?
Sorry, we just echo Council Oro's point, which Council Joseph agreed with. And we, we did feel that the Napa Junction location was the most prestigious of the locations, that was part of the consideration. And then... And then with, with regard to, we specifically chose McLogic because that would recognize both people. So that, that was why we're making that recommendation. I personally like the idea of Independence Park, and it's on the list that we've provided. Just to take a step back in terms of process, we had, we, we had the debate on the names that we got from the community outreach. And so we were, we were kinda confined to those names within the debate. And then we narrowed that down to these recommendations. So that, that was kinda how we got there. Of, of course, this is advisory, so you're, you're not bound by our recommendations. But I would note that there's, we don't have Leon identified for the Napa Junction location, so.
Anyone else on the commission? Chair?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, just to provide a little bit of insight into our discussion. First, I do think that is important to stick to the list that is before us. Because these suggestions came from community members that took the time to fill out the application and submit it. And I feel that that would be, it would be disrespectful to the community members that took the time to fill out that application and submit it to then go completely off track and, you know, decide on a name that isn't on this list at all and wasn't presented by the community. I feel if we, if that is up for consideration, that we need to open it back up to the community and start all over again. So, that being said, I did present my concerns with the Donaldson Park. As Councilmember Oro was stating, that Donaldson is a long street, and that there are other parks on Donaldson. The play structure that is part of Donaldson Way Elementary, and then also that Shenandoah is also off of Donaldson. I love the idea of Independence Park or Patriot Park because it truly signifies a lot of the use of that park. And I think that that is identifiable to our community members. I don't want anybody driving around looking for any of these parks. You know, it's important to me that we rename them, and it makes sense to the broader community, and that they can find them, to use them. Because that's, that's the point of the whole, of the whole thing. And then the point of renaming the old Napa Junction Community Center is to honor someone who made significant contribution. And I do think that we should use the last name to honor both Dolly and Mickey, as Fran was stating. So, I love, I love the discussion, I love the thought process. And I think, you know, having one park that is not named for the street that it's on, for its geographical location, but yet for what it is primarily used for in the community, is sort of following along with the, the Veterans Park idea as well. And now that we're gonna have the wall, that, you know, that's a great opportunity for us to have a ribbon cutting and commemorate. And July Fourth is coming, so get your bids out, get to sign up, let's go. That's all, thank you.
And then a little background also, that I know that the Napa Junction, the Napa Junction, in the names, the list of names here, it says Mickey and Dolly's Activity Center, and we kinda talked about that. And we just thought, and, and the McLogic name isn't on here, but we discussed that, and we thought maybe that would sound a little bit more, I don't know, what's the, what's the...
Prestigious.
Prestigious, that's what I was going to say. Sounds a little bit more prestigious. The Mickey and Dolly's Activity Center, we wanted something to, you know, sound, sound, I don't know, more pleasing to the ear. And so that's, that's how we got it, we, we thought about calling it McLogic. And then my thing was, well, we're gonna have a, I know I'm having a difficult time pronouncing it. But the thing is, when, if that's presented, there, that will cause people to want to be able to pronounce it correctly, and maybe be curious about the history. Who, who, what's McLogic, who is he? And then that will kinda stick, stick to them, and then he'll, they'll learn a little history of, of American Canyon. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, I like Councilmember Oro's recommendations. But Gina's kinda right as well, with Com, Community Park One. Rio Grande Park was, that's a good name, but it wasn't one that was from the community. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to calling it that, but yeah, like she said, that wasn't one that was from the community. I like Independence Park for, Part Two, and McLogic Center for the community center.
Any other comments from commission? Uh, return to the city council.
I have one.
Oh, Commissioner Mallory.
I wanna echo Vice Mayor Joseph and Commissioner Coots. You know, the name is difficult to pronounce, I had to write it out how it sounds, you know, for me to be able to say it. But having this gentleman and this family name on something in our, in our community will force us to, to learn it. And we will have elementary school children knowing it, you know, at, at a very early age. So to have that name on something would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Mallory.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment really quick?
Absolutely.
Chair Mattson just reminded me that in front of you, you actually have the full list of all the names that were recommended to you. And for Community Park One, Rio Grande Park is one of the options that was recommended by the community.
Thank you.
And then also, not to complicate things any further, but Leon Garcia Center is also, has been identified for the Napa Junction Elementary School. So I just wanna let you know that. There, there is, the recommendations before you are their recommendations, but you can pull for the full entire list.
Correct. And, and I knew that from earlier, when it was mentioned that we shouldn't disrespect the, the public. I don't think any name that was brought up today was a name outside of the list that we have. So, Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, so after everyone's debate and deliberation of all this, of the names, after thinking about things, and I do wanna honor, of course, the parks. And, you know, we put, we put you guys and gals there for a reason, and we wanna honor your decisions. And I'm assuming the highlight is what got the most votes? Is that what it is, is that what I understand? Now, there's a whole list, there's, I'm looking at Community Park One, there's like twenty-four names, but the ones in yellow, is that the most tallied names? Okay, so with that being said, I'm, I'm gonna mix bag here. So with one, I'm thinking Rio Del Mar Park. Number two, I know a lot of us are saying Independence, so I think that's a winner already. Unless we go Patriot, but Independence Park seems pretty, pretty good for most of us here on number two. And number three, the Mickey and Dolly McLogic Center, I think that's, that's great. But for, there's gonna be other parks, the centers, in the near future, I could tell you that much. So I know we'll have a, a bright future ahead of us. But those are my three picks, as I rename my names. So, thanks.
Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm, I'm gonna throw this motion on the floor with a modification, and I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Cruz. I, I actually think Rio Grande Park is something that we should do, cuz it's the more exact location, it's actually on that street. I'll make a motion to adopt that for Community Park One. Also, add to that motion to name Community Park Two, Independence Park. And then a modification on the Napa Junction school site to be the McLogic Center. Simple enough, a center is a place that a lot of things happen. It could be a community event, it could be a basketball game, it could be a community garden in that back area, something that we can build. And so that's my motion, and then I'll just have one final comment. There's a big bodybuilder, movie star that decided not to change his name, and we learned how to say it. His name is Arnold Schwarzenegger. So we will know how to say McLogic properly. That's my motion.
Just a point of clarification real quick, that item tonight is informational, really is direction of staff, we could certainly do staff votes, that sort of thing.
My, my, my motion is to direct staff to come back with a resolution to adopt those names that I just mentioned.
I'll second that.
You second that. I just wanna confirm the names again.
Community Park One will be Rio Grande Park. Community Park Two will be Independence Park. Napa Junction Center will be the McLogic Center.
And it should be pointed, it turns out to be a much easier to pronounce than to spell. Just, just as a point.
Yeah, so we have a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Who's the second?
Melissa.
Melissa, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamatina?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cruz, Councilmember Lamatina, Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
And Mayor Washington.
Yes. Uh, thank you for that hard work, that was a tough, tough job for you guys to do, so I appreciate that. Great names that came out of that. Moving on to the second business item, item number two, work plan fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Akita.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm pulling it up right now, I thought I printed it out.
Ditto what we said earlier, Mayor, with the, with the Parks Commission, we get together with these bodies each year, provide direction, and a work plan for the upcoming year.
The commissions got together and worked on this plan.
And it shows up on the last page of your packet, page one fifty-three.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jason. So before you this evening, our commission came up with their net, their draft work plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't think I left any items off on this work plan, I think we are good to go to celebrate that I got this correct. But our, our lovely chair will remind me if there's something that's missing. We want to continue our, our efforts with updating the Parks and Community Services Master Plan. This is something that we've started early in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and we wanna be able to continue those efforts. We've already had our first kickoff meeting with our commissions, and we're gonna start moving into community engagement and stakeholder meetings. We wanna develop an active adult program fee waiver. This is specifically around our active adult community, and waiving specific fees for them to be able to participate in Parks and Recreation programs that are offered by the city. We would like to develop a community grant policy. This came up at the council, a direction of having an interest of wanting to have a grant policy for nonprofits to be able to come to PCS, and then make that recommendation to council to do that. We would like to update Resolution two thousand fourteen ninety-three inflatable play equipment policy. This past year, in our department downstairs, we had initiative to pull all of our resolutions to figure out what we have and what we don't have. And one of them is this resolution that is fairly outdated with our current process. So we would like to take a refresh of that and take a look at it and rewrite it to what we're currently doing right now. We would like to evaluate a potential revenue measure. We've been talking a lot about the master plan and potential facilities and things that this community has really desired. And we felt that it would be appropriate to talk about some sort of revenue measure to be able to support that work. It's, it's great to have a master plan, but it's, we need to figure out the funding process behind that as well. And then review current capital improvement program projects. This is for the current fiscal year, so we have several projects, I wanna say in the upwards of fifteen projects that are scheduled for this next fiscal year. And so our idea is to bring them to this, to PCS first for review and comment. And then we would come to council for award of, adoption of the contract and design and everything like that. And then, lastly, we, it's a current practice, we'd like to incorporate our Parks and Community Services Commission, or both of our commissions, to be a part of planning for the next fiscal year for potential CIP projects, so that's on the work plan as well.
Thank you for that presentation, or that, that update. I actually think it's a great decision for the active adult center to waive those, those fees. That was something I've been advocating for, for some time now. I think it helps the, the mental health of our senior citizens, gets them out, gets them active. Question though, is this limited to only our residents, or can any senior citizen, can Vallejo come over and hang out and, without a waiver, without a fee?
So we'll, we'll do whatever the council wants us to do, but our recommendation is for it to be for American Canyon residents. We have a lot of active adults in our community, and we already have, we've spent a ton of time on developing our fee policy. And of that, we do have a difference with our resident rate versus our non-resident rate. And we identify that where non-residents pay fifteen percent more than our residents. And so the idea is to really focus this policy on our residents here in American Canyon, provide an opportunity for them to be able to participate at a no cost.
Gotcha, and I'm fine with that, because I think it's all about our residents. So I, 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 it might have sounded like a trick question, but it wasn't. But I just wanted to make sure that our residents, because we are the, the leading city, right, for retired folks to come to, to retire. So we gotta focus on those folks. So I mean, I'm, I'm really, I'm really good with that. Councilmember Lamatina?
Hi there, I have one question. What is the age where you consider older adult, and who doesn't have to pay?
So that's a very interesting, that's a very interesting question. Through the National Parks and Recreation Society, an active adult is considered anybody who's fifty or older. We were focusing more on this around, I know, that's why we call them active adults. Those of you that are on the cusp, I know you don't wanna be called a senior, I still have a couple of years, so we're good. Um, so to, there is a lot of philosophical conversations throughout the industry nationwide about adults being classified as a senior. And that's why we've kind of transitioned that senior word into active adult, to make it more appropriate, and fit with that, with, with those individuals that are, don't want to be labeled as a senior. And so what we were thinking about, cuz we have a wide range, that, that leaves a very wide, wide range in our community. And so we were thinking sixty-five or older to participate. Cuz when you're fifty, you're still most likely working, you're still contributing to community and doing active things. And hopefully, by the time when you're sixty-five, you are retired, and you're doing the things that you love to do. And so we were thinking about having that be the minimum age requirement.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, how about from the commission, any questions?
Just, so thank you, we're, we're really excited about this plan, and thank you, Ally, for kinda leading us in this. When we met in May, we did add one thing to the work plan, which was that we wanted to create a work stream to provide recommendations to update the municipal code two point two-nine, which describes PRC, because it's, it's pretty outdated. So that was one thing we wanted to add, so, which I think myself and Gina were excited about that, maybe. But we're active adults, so...
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open to...
Oh, sorry. Here I am. Did you miss me? Okay, thank you. Here I go. Yes, I would like to echo Commissioner Smith's comments, that we are, I am very excited about this work plan. I think it is very doable. I am excited to work on things that then I can see brought to fruition, and that provide community benefit. So, work plans that seem doable and attainable in that timeframe are very exciting to me personally. And I would love to update ordinance 99103 guidelines for Parks and Community Services Commissioners. It is sorely outdated. I would be happy to take on that task, should the council want us to do that. And I would like also to suggest that an active adult be sixty-two and a half, because that's like, really not an exciting number at all, but that's when you can collect more on social security. So I feel like we should align with the federal government. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Griggs. Anyone else? Any commissioner? I'll open it up now to public comment on item number two, if there's any.
I have no speaker cards, and no one is online.
Okay, then I will return to the council and the... Gotcha.
Sorry, I didn't do a card, because I didn't know who was gonna speak. But I just want to welcome everybody who's slightly over fifty into the active adult era. That is really exciting for me. Some of us are slightly over fifty and still working, but welcome to it.
Thank you, Beth. Councilmember Oro?
Ms. Marcus, I'll wait until sixty-two and a half. Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. I saw, first of all, I'd be happy, supportive of updating the commission ordinances. I know Chair Griggs would be happy to do that. I could, you can add that to the work plan. I think it's the right thing to do. The council met earlier, we're talking about policies and ordinances, and things have to be updated, and if this one's old, please do so. You heard my spiel, I think all of you were here earlier, about the community center and opportunities for that. I hope you find that as important as well, and please, please do study that, and would encourage that. And then the other thing I would mention, there is a fiscal plan, I would encourage staff to, and I know they will do this, but I think, I think it's worth saying, please be sure to come up with all kinds of creative ideas. CFDs, tax bond measures, TOT, anything that we can come up with, and fee management plans. Think creatively. I think, I honestly feel that this community has not properly invested in the parks, even though they love our parks and what we're doing. We've been fortunate enough to have an outside organization to elevate parks and open space around here, and if we actually had the city kind of make that same investment, where could we be if we could find some money to do that? And I would encourage you to, to stretch and think about what we could do. Because I know the municipalities that have the best parks invest in their parks, and the citizens invest in their parks. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro. I guess I would entertain a motion to accept the...
It's a minute order approving PCS work plan for 2025, 2026.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept that and include updating the PCS commissioner guidelines.
And I'll second that list.
And does that include what you were mentioning earlier about the...
It was just, it was just more of a thought, it's already on the work plan. Hopefully, they heard me.
We have a second? Can we get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And with that, we have concluded our businesses for all our topics tonight, this evening, so we are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.